First thing on the agenda is going to be a public hearing for the water department on Sears Street proposing to put in a new water treatment plant. This is a public hearing. You'll all be have a chance to speak if you'd like to, but let us get through with the presentation. We have the engineers and the water commissioners here to explain it to us. And if there's any questions, we'll try to get your answers for you. And if you do speak, wait to be addressed by the chair and give your name and your address because we are keeping minutes, so we want to have an accurate know who you are. With that being said, who's going to be doing the yes sir?
Would you like me to stand?
No, you don't have to just to sit.
Are you going to make the notice?
Yeah, where is it?
Well, it should be making all the other rest of the stuff.
Yeah, you're right. Excuse me, I am.
It should be, yeah.
I knew I could miss something. Yeah.
Yeah. This is where I dragged. That they would go to if it was okay. I'm actually really dangly about this dress, so you want me to go see if I can find one?
Yeah, we need it.
It's not on the agenda?
Not on the agenda. Let's take a little recess while we find the documentation. The meeting now that we have the paperwork we need to read into the record. This being a public hearing, it has to, we have to give a public notice. And notice is hereby given pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 9 and Section 4.4, Table of Use Regulations Municipal and Public Buildings, 4.6 Water Resource Protection District, 7.5 Special Permit and 7.2 Site Plan of the Westbridge Water Zoning Bylaws. An application has been, was submitted by Tada and Howard on behalf of the applicant Westbridge Water, Water Department Superintendent Wayne Parks and the Westbridge Water Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, July 16, 2025, beginning at 6:30 in the McDonald Brown Conference Room at Town Hall. The intent of the plan is to construct a new 9,970 square foot, 1.8 million gallon per day capacity water treatment plant and make associated improvements for the project located behind the Water Department Office Building, 7 Sears Street in the general resident and farming and water resource protection district. A special permit is required for activity in the water resource protection district. A site plan review is part of the special permit process. A copy of the plan is available at the office of the town clerk for review and it's signed by the members of the planning board and it was published in the Brockton Enterprise on June 30th and July 7, 2025. That being said, sir, would you introduce yourself and resume?
So my name is James Hoyt. I'm from Taten Howard Incorporated out of Marlboro, Massachusetts, and we are representing the Westbridge Water Water Department for this project. With me, the co-presenter is Caitlin Slowick, also from Taten Howard. So I'm going to give a brief overview of the project and then Caitlin has some visuals which we can walk you through some of the project details and then go into as much depth on any particular topic that Andrew would like. So to start with the why of the project, Westbridge Water has two main water sources, the Manley Street source and then the Sears and Norman sources. There are water quality concerns at the Sears-Norman site specifically related to iron and manganese. And in order to bring the water quality in compliance with Massachusetts regulations and guidelines, we need to add additional treatment for iron and manganese. Currently, those wells are served by various well stations between the two sites, the first being the Sears Street site, which is also the location of the water department offices. And then adjacent to that site across some wetlands is the Norman Avenue well site. So the idea of this project is consolidate all of those wells into a single treatment plant that will have improved treatment capabilities to provide water quality consistent with the needs. It will also improve reliability to provide water as we consolidate those wells into a single treatment plant and give the department more flexibility as to what wells they can use and their total available water as this plant will be sized for 1.8 million gallons, which is the max day demand currently for the water department. Some things to note on this project, it is an SRF funded project, so the water department will be getting a loan with principal forgiveness provided we can have all of our permits and award in place prior to those deadlines. And the project was also subject to NEPA permitting because there was an environmental justice population in Brockton that is within one mile of the project site. So as the, as we went through that NEPA process, that required extra due diligence as it pertains to environmental protection as well as impacts to neighbors. So one thing you'll note is that, you know, as Caitlin provides the project, there was emphasis on really minimizing the amount of clearing we've done on site. So she'll show you that we used a part of the site that already had some clearing done to minimize the number of trees we'll take because that could impact climate resilience. We also designed the stormwater to more stringent standards than just the Massachusetts stormwater guidelines, which was in our stormwater permit application that was approved by, excuse me, by the Conservation Commission last month. So with that, I'll turn it over to Caitlin and she'll kind of go into some of the site details.
I don't know in the best place.
Want me to hold it?
Sure. My human easel.
Isn't there a nice one in the Brown-McDonald thing? You want me to go grab it?
No, no, that's fine. He's doing a good job.
Okay, so the site, this is the proposed water treatment plant location located at 7 Sears Street. So this is the parcel for 7 Sears Street. There's currently two wells on that site and they are treated at a pump station on that site. This parcel next to it is 29 Sears Street. That's where the water department offices are. There's also two wells on that parcel treated at a pump station here. And then there's a fifth well, the Norman Ave well on this parcel. That water will be piped to this new proposed water treatment plant as well. This parcel is approximately 25 acres. We're right here in the middle of this giant parcel. They're currently, like I mentioned, this well is treated by a pump station here as well. So there are chemical deliveries happening and general maintenance to these buildings already, but we'll be combining these three pump stations into one giant water treatment plant.
We'll be abandoning the other station, the...
They have electrical equipment in them, so that'll stay in place, but the chemicals will be gone.
All the chemicals will be gone, okay.
So this is zoomed in view of the site. This is an area of work is approximately two acres on the site. We're clearing approximately 0.4 acres of trees for that. The proposed building is 57 by 115 feet. It does have a partial basement and a partial mezzanine, so it has a total area of 9,825 square feet. It has a full driveway around it to allow access for chemical deliveries, maintenance, and fire trucks if necessary. There's four parking spaces in the front. The water department estimates at any time, there'll probably be two people there in one vehicle. So there's additional parking. We have a transformer, a natural gas generator. Waste will go to a tight tank over here. And then there's also for stormwater, we have three sedimentation basins and two infiltration basins. It's completely fenced in with a sliding gate for security. To give you an idea of why this building is so big, as James mentioned, we have to treat for iron and manganese. That's done with filtration. So this whole area is for the filter tanks. We did leave room for future filter filtration. Water quality regulations are always changing, so instead of building a new building, these filter vessels aren't being installed now, but they can be brought in through a garage door in the future. We have chemical containment here for the water quality. Those chemical containment areas are aligned with fiberglass coating, so if any chemical spills, it won't seep through the concrete. There's a spill kit on site that'll solidify any spill and it can be disposed of properly. Additional rooms, there's an outdoor aerator. This is outside the building in the back corner. There's a mechanical room, storage, electrical. There's a lab with a sink and then a bathroom, and so the lab and there's a sink here and the bathroom that'll go to the tight tank. And there's also a sprinkler system on site. And lastly, just to show you the basement, this is the pipe gallery, so this is where humans can go downstairs and access pumps. This is a wet well, so this is where water is held after it's shown before it's filtered. And then this is the backwash waste tank. So those filters are backwashed daily to clean them. Waste goes into this tank. The residuals will settle to the bottom. Clean water stays higher. It can be recycled into the treatment process and reused, and the residuals are pumped out. And this tank is lined with an NSF 60 compliant lining, so nothing will get out there. I think that's it on the overview.
Okay, thank you. We had, I know I'd looked at it and I've talked to the superintendent, we had a couple of concerns and I believe that he has addressed them all. One of the concerns was the parking and he pointed out that because it is a treatment plant, public will not be in there. There'd be no reason for anybody from the public and it is virtually in walking distance from the main office anyways, so parking is not a problem on it. One of the other things was, in fact, you touched on it, that a fire truck can get around it, but it is also room, my understanding, because I believe he checked with you, that it could, large trailer trucks, they will be able to fit in there. Although I believe at the time that they're just smaller delivery trucks, but who knows what's going to be in the future or if you have to bring in, if you ever bring those tanks in, they're not going to, you know, that's going to be, so the, it has been addressed. And now I'm kind of talking on the site plan approval part of it is, what do you have for lighting? I believe just some down lighting on the building.
Yeah.
And in fact, you are so far away from any residents anyways in there, so it really, when it really becomes an issue is when it's right adjacent to it and we trying to keep a dark sky. It used to be everybody liked to have a halo over their, over their business and so I believe that that has been addressed. I'm kind of asking you to confirm.
Yes, that is true. Another thing that we noted going through the NEPA process was that we didn't take down any old growth trees between our site and any adjacent neighbors. So the tree cover and the buffer between neighbors and the site remains how it is today.
And you're so far away too.
There is a lot of space as well, yeah.
Your particular site really doesn't, most of the things we ask for in the site plan review and any review of it, you're so far away from anything, so it really doesn't. I'm just saying this to get in, into the record so that if, we don't want people to say, well, you didn't even look at the plan, you didn't even, we did look at it and we listened to you, what you said and I believe those concerns have been addressed. We may have some more, something else may come up, but those were mine and I, like I said, I talked to Mr. Parks about it. I talked to the conservation agent and I've seen the reports, reports from engineer, Mr. Brennan, so as far as the drainage, they're all happy with it. And for the area you have and for the size you're doing it, it was easy to accomplish. And there's no wetland issues in that particular section of their land. It's a, they own a lot, you said 25 acres, they own a lot more than 25 acres, but I know it's, it's a bunch of smaller parcels and it's still listed, it's a smaller, but yeah, it's, it's fine. Has anybody else got any?
You said the thing is sprinkled, got a fire alarm sprinkler system. What is, is it dry or wet?
A wet system would freeze in the winter if it's an unoccupied building most of the time.
But I mean, it's either full of water until a sprinkler head activates itself, then the air displaces and then it fills with water, or the system is always full of water. It looks like it's all inside and it's a heated building because you're dealing with liquids you don't want to freeze anyways. But, because if the sprinkler system should trip, the, where is that water going to go in relationship to the chemicals and stuff you've got in that place? Because sprinkler heads go off, they're going to, well, you've got them in this room here. They're going to six, 10 feet old shat thing when it comes up and down. So to keep anything from going outside the building, what is built there to contain any type of, could be your stuff, it could be a sprinkler system. Most sprinkler systems in buildings nowadays that break are broken because of an accident of somebody with a piece of equipment. It's not necessarily from fires. So if a head gets tripped and all of a sudden it dumps and this building has only got people in it a certain number of hours a day, by the time the alarm goes off and the fire department notifies the water department or the fire department goes up there, you could have an awful lot of water dumped into your equipment. So is there a containment that's going to, because I know around your chemical buildings on that other page, they've probably got lifts, right?
Yeah.
So it's a containment, there's a formula for, it's supposed to contain one and a half times stuff, whatever you got for chemicals so it won't overflow. Same, same is done with gas stations and stuff, but as far as if there is an accident of some sort there, is the whole building, will liquid stay within the building and go to a pump change with? Or will it flow out an overhead door that's at floor level?
Yeah, so it's a good question. So, I mean, our vessels are pressurized and closed, so there'll be no damage to the treatment process themselves. The chemicals are also enclosed, so we don't have a large concern of the water mixing with the chemicals. However, you know, there will be, you know, a downside of that water collecting in the building and it would most likely find its way to the drains and out to the stormwater system.
What is built into the stormwater system to protect against anything that might be hazardous if it's coming out of the building?
So it would just be the deep sump structures between the building and the stormwater. So if the volume of the spill was larger than that, then they would have, we'd have to mobilize pumpers trucks to get out there and keep up and remove it. So there would be...
We require in all other water protected districts that they have a tight tank, like suppose, well, use an example, Enterprise up on, off of the west side of town, they're allowed to wash trucks and have stuff in, but anything that's in that building goes into a tank which has its own pump monitoring system so that when it becomes full, where you're set up right now directly goes into the drainage system.
I believe so, we'll have to check. We do have a tight tank.
You have, that's the storage, right?
Correct.
But I think because we're requiring it for other people in town when they're in the water protection districts, that maybe you should consider putting a tight tank. It could be inside underneath the floor, it could be any place we lay it to handle anything from the inside so it doesn't go directly out into the drainage system because your drainage system is your water shut. And that's where you're pumping water. When you pump water, you draw from the ground around the wells. So I think it's a safety issue and where we have required it and other businesses that want to do things in it, it's just to take, some of its places, they bring in snow covered cars, might be snow covered trucks, but they have to be, the system is protected so it, then they can bring the pump truck in when the 1,000, 2,000 gallon tank reaches a certain level and they'll pump it out. But where you're doing it here, you have no such...
We do not, but that's something we will take into consideration and I think probably add to the project for your suggestion.
Is there, anybody else have any concerns or questions or interest?
He said it's sprinkled, but will it report back if the alarm goes off?
Yes.
There's a master box in the building?
Yes.
Okay. One other thing that came up, in fact, it just came up at noon time today, was this particular, the land that the town owns, we only have the end of Sears Street, that's the extent of their frontage. You do not have any frontage. So for a building to be in compliance with our zoning, you're going to have to get a variance from the zoning board of appeals for frontage. Actually, the town, but it's under the Conservation Commission, owns land that this land, if it was combined with, would front onto North Main Street. But as far as this particular parcel, it does not have any frontage, so it shouldn't, you know, it shouldn't be an issue. I'm just bringing it up that it's something more, more to be done. I just found out about it, like I say, today. So, but it's something to be addressed in the future. I don't see a problem at all.
Yeah, so it's kind of in the same situation as the existing office where for the assessor's database, Sears Street right away terminates at the property line, but Sears Street itself continues into the property, goes beyond our site into the existing well station number two. And then the driveway to the existing water department office is off of that segment of Sears Street. So, you know, we do have frontage to Sears Street, but it's technically not the public right of way.
Yeah, it's not an accepted rule, right.
It's no problem. I just bring it up because I want to get everything on, on the record. It's not a, it's not a problem and it's, and just the same with like the, the parking, when, you know, it's only going to be two people at most down there and they're probably walked down, so we, and what did you say, you had four parking spaces, I think? So that's, okay. We were treating this like any other industrial building and it's all based on square footage and it, this thing, because this isn't a building, it isn't occupied, it isn't using, this is a, well, it's a treatment plant and the whole thing is treatment plant, so. Is it any more, otherwise, let me, we have some, in fact, if you have a seat, if you like to be more comfortable. In our regulations under 7.5.3, considerations for approval of a special permit, which is what we're doing, we have to make some findings. One, the specific site is appropriate location for such use in structural condition, which I think is very obvious, it's, it's right next to the wells, it's where it should be and it's the last, it's a pointed departure from any water. So, the usage developed and operating will not adversely affect the neighborhood. There will be no nuisance or hazard to vehicles or pedestrians of volume greater than the capacity of the streets affected. D, adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for proper operation of the proposed use. And E, access to the site or the streets as appropriate type of vehicles involved. I think pretty much, I think all of those are covered. Does anybody have any question on, on any of them?
My only concern was they had talked about the drive for trucks for delivering tanks and stuff later and you had said that that was expanded?
Sorry.
Was the drive expanded near the garage door for more, for the trucks to get in and out with equipment?
So, yeah, the main driver between, of the driveway was to make sure that we could get trucks around the building, both for maintenance reasons, but also for fire apparatus. So the driveway is currently configured, you know, essentially to DOT standards of curves to make sure that you can come in, go around the building without having to do any sort of three point turn or anything like that. The paving extends or such that a truck can essentially pull straight in, go in a anti-clockwise direction and then back out, out of the site.
I guess my concern was just the big bay door that we were talking about.
So the garage door is not for access to vehicles, it's for access for maintenance?
Right, but equipment will need to get dropped near there occasionally, every once in the blue moon, I imagine.
Yeah, we've seen it done before, it's a tank would be delivered somewhere else on the driveway and...
Right, but I mean, maintenance, something breaks, you got to bring a piece of equipment in and one out. Is there room for a truck to be able to maneuver to do that there?
It would be parallel to the building.
Perhaps if you could, we can actually look...
That's 38. It's not even 30.
The truck would, they'd be parallel to it.
What's the distance off the building to the end of the pavement?
To the what?
From the bay door to the edge of the pavement.
I don't know, how do I have...
That might be my only concern, it's just that they'll be able to get a truck back in there and out.
Thank you.
Most of the pumps are going to be small chemical feed pumps. They'll be pumps that you carry by hand.
So you won't need to get like a truck in there or anything?
No, I mean, they'll...
I just want to make sure you have what you need to get stuff in.
Yeah, but trust me, in the Manley Street plant, they didn't design it so we can even change the light bulbs.
Yeah.
It's 32.
Okay, is that adequate for you?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. If the water department's good with it, I'm good with it.
And, and these are engineers that do this, this isn't, when we have somebody coming in because they're trying to do something, make a fast buck, you know, commercial...
We just want to make sure they have adequacy.
Yeah, no, which is a...
It's a valid point if we have to be, but we do not.
No, it's, no, it's a valid question. I have no problem with that. I'll entertain a motion to make the finding that the conditions under 7.5.3.1 have... uh, point one uh, have been addressed.
So moved. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now moving. Also, in seven point five point three point two, I, in addition to the items listed in section seven point five point three point one, any such effort for use in the water usage shall be subject to the following conditions. The use is appropriate to the hydrology, natural topography soils and other characters of the site. B, the use will not during construction thereafter or thereafter have any adverse environmental impact on any of the zones of the water resource protection district. And C, the use will not adversely affect the, an existing or designated future well.
So, yeah, that, in our opinion, that is correct.
Because they're combining all the wells to, this place could be collecting all the wells.
Yeah, I mean, there's no, there really is no change of use on the property. It's currently used for the same use, which is to produce and treat water. We're just bringing it into a, you know, a single, um, you know, structure. And, you know, we're using the same chemicals, um, you know, as existing uh, well stations. Um, so, you know, it's our opinion then.
You, you picked a spot that is already a disturbed area. So as far as the uh, natural topography, you're, it's already kind of a flat area and you're, and you're working with it. And the soils, it's all good soils there, so you're not bringing any changing, it's a, uh, during, during construction. Uh, uh, we haven't, you didn't address it, but I'm sure it's all kinds of, I know there'll be still fences around it and, and, and all of that, so that's taken it, and uh, you're not doing anything to affect the, an existing designated future well, public wells and, and you're in the water field, you, you understand. I think you, as a professional, can, can answer that affirmatively.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, that takes care of the water resource. This is all.
Do you have a motion on seven five three two?
Oh, excuse me, no, I didn't. I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, well.
Uh, we have a second? We have a motion and a second, that the conditions of seven point five point three point two have been addressed and are out of what? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we've got one more, because this is site plan approval. And the guidelines for site plan approval. In considering any plan, the submittal of the following concerns shall be addressed. Protection, protection of visual barriers. You're out, and you're out in the woods. So, so it, it, you, it cannot, it cannot be seen. Use of landscaping or not fencing to establish buffers and screens between incompatible uses. It is all compatible uses, but I heard you say that this is going to have a fence around it, a security fence, because you, this is something that nobody should ever go into, so you've got a security fence there. Uh, the provisions of open space and pedestrian amenities available to the public. Well, it's, it's uh, this is, it isn't an open space. It isn't, it isn't something for the many, for people. I, I know you do have people that go in and walk, walk around through there, but it, this is not a park.
Right, this is, you know, we're not interrupting any paths or any areas of current, you know, recreational use.
The arrangement of access points, service road, driveways, parking, lighting and pedestrian widening manner which facilitates interior circulation, that doesn't have anything to do with it either. Ease of access, travel on the site, movement for fire and police, equipment and other. The uh, you addressed that there is, the road is sufficient for fire vehicles to get in there as, as well as tractor trailer trucks, so it, it, access, access is there. Um, provision for underground placement of utilities. Well, you're, you're putting the, part of the utilities are underground. It's a lot of it. You're doing the, doing the best, I imagine the, the electrical will be overhead.
So it will have buried electrical as well?
Oh, you will have buried.
We will, yeah, and gas.
Okay.
But we already have existing underground uh, utilities in Seer Street and we'll be installing them there just on the opposite side to avoid conflicts.
Okay. Provision of surface runoff and protection of the site. Uh, and adjacent properties, all we've already got the, that the engineer, Mr. Brennan was satisfied with the drainage and, and design of it. A siting of building construction, open space permitted, maximum use of passive solar energy and to permit maximum protection of pedestrian areas from adverse impacts of winds, vapors and other.
So the roof is designed to support the weight of solar, so if down the road, the water department wants to pursue that, that option's available?
And, and the building was sited to address the two different well stations you have.
Correct.
Rather than putting it beside one or the other, you, you, you did it to so you'd be compatible with both of them. That's, I believe it's.
Yeah, it's located kind of between wells one A and one B, and then on the other side are four and five, it's, you know, the most central location.
Okay, hysterical conditions, considerations. That was a gravel pit. The whole, that whole area was a big gravel pit, so any hysterical considerations, I think, get halved away in a dump. And uh, provision for mason of common areas, they're not in the common areas, it's a, it's not open.
It's a security.
Uh, anybody have any questions on any, any of these? That being said, I'll entertain a motion that we have addressed the guidelines and find.
So move.
Take up and that.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, uh. Town planner has addressed some of the issues here, as far as conditions. A copy putting in, which is, this one is boil plating, with copy to be recorded as the registry of deeds. All special permits have to be recorded. Uh, number two, an as-built plan provided to the planning board and building commissioners prior to certificate of occupancy. Well, you're really not occupying it, and I'm sure you're going to be doing an as-built plan for, for, for the, for the water department. So I'm sure that that has been, been addressed, so really I don't foresee any, 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 any conditions on this. That being said. I'll entertain a motion to move to grant to the town of Westbridge Water Department a special permit pursuant to zoning bylaws, section four point six, water resource, district, district seven point two, site plan, uh, seven point five special permit and four point four table of use regulations, municipal public buildings to construct and operate a new iron and manganese water treatment plant and make associated improvements at the property located at seven Seer Street in the general residence and farming district and water protection district. It's all right in here.
So move.
We have a, we have a motion and we have a second? Do we have any further discussion? This being a, a special permit, I'm going to do a rules call of the, of Mr. Noice, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stetson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Bernstein, how do you?
Aye.
And Mr. Hurley votes aye. This being a special permit, it has to be four of the five. One of our members is in here, so we have achieved that the four are.
Corn.
Uh, corn that is needed. So we have approved that. The next thing will be the site plan approval. And uh, this only revise, needs a, a, a simple majority. We are a five-member board, so it requires that at least three of us vote for this. Move to find that as conditioned, the site plan guidelines set forth in section seven point two have been considered and satisfied by the town of Westbridge Water, Water Department for the iron and manganese water treatment plant and associated improvements at the property located at seven Seer Street in the general residence and farming and water resource protection districts. Do I have a motion?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote is unanimous of the four present. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, this will be, uh, the decision will be written, uh, written up and filed with the uh, town clerk and there's a, a field, he'll carry it on it, but you, you have been approved.
Understood. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
I'd like to thank the planning board. You really do a really good job of protecting the water resource protection districts in town. Pretty much the entire town sits on our aquifer, the whole town's aquifer. And you guys and daughter really do a good job of protecting it. I'd like to thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along to the next one. The uh, next thing on the agenda, we have, we have two sites, thirty eight and forty, um, United Drive. They are owned by the same person, but they are, uh, actually two separate sites, so they're going to be two individual special permits are doing, but because they are so related and so, so close, we are going to open both hearings at the same time and discuss both parcels at the same time. When we're done with it, we are going to vote individually on each, each one. I'm just kind of laying the, the groundwork for how it is, because this is a little bit different than, than, but it, it's still, it's not that different. We, we have uh, thirty eight. Okay, I, I will read, um. I'll read, I'll read in the, into the minutes, the uh, public hearing as they appeared in the Dr. Acton Enterprise on June thirtieth and, and July seventh. Both public, both notices were in the newspaper at the same time. And they both basically say the same thing, so I'm, I'm going to read it. But the only thing different was going to be the, the number thirty eight and the number forty for one of the other. No notices hereby given pursuant to Mass General laws, chapter forty eight, section nine, and section four point four table of use regulations, warehouse and distribution centers, except fuel, four point six water resource protection district, seven point five special permit and seven point two site plan of the Westbridge Water zoning bylaws. And an application was submitted by Bowler Engineering on behalf of the owner, Ajax United Drive LLC. And the Westbridge Water Planning Board will held a hearing on Wednesday, July the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, beginning at six thirty in the McDonald Conference Room at Town Hall. The intent of the plan is to modify an existing uh, or seek a new special permit or plan approval to increase the parking space count to one hundred and sixty-two, where only a hundred and forty are required, and make other associated improvements at the property located at thirty eight United Drive in the industrial water protection district overlay. A special permit is required by the activity in the water, uh, water resource protection district. The site plan is, we need to view as part of the special permit process. And it is uh, signed by the members of the planning board. And as stated, it was in June thirtieth and twenty-five, and having freshly read it again, it reminded me, actually, these are a little bit different. One of them, thirty eight is uh, is to modify an existing permit. And um, I'll read the, the pertinent section for, for the United Drive. The intent of the plan is to modify an existing, or seek a new special permit, site plan approval to increase the parking space count to two hundred and twenty-three, where only a hundred and ninety are required, and make other associated improvements at the property located at forty United Drive in the industrial water protection district. So those, that was the difference between both of them. Having read that in, it's, it's one other thing. One of our members has uh, uh, for a conflict of interest would like to read into the, into the record. Um, he noticed it was sent to the town clerk pertaining to when, when somebody has a conflict of interest out of necessity, we need four people to vote and one of our members, we have five members, one of them is incapacitated and he's in a, uh, medical facility. And so we need all four. That being said, Mr. Noice, if you would.
Uh, this is a letter I sent to the town clerk. Under MGL chapter two sixty-eight A of the conflict of interest statute, I would like to disclose to you that the planning board has an application for a special permit slash site plan in water resources dis, protection district review for thirty eight and forty United Drive. The consulting engineer for both projects is Bowler Engineering. My employer, Greenman Peterson, Inc., has an on-call contract with Bowler Engineering to perform traffic services. That contract was signed in two thousand and nineteen. To date, GPI has only worked on two projects with Bowler, with the last invoice being July of two thousand and twenty-one, forty years ago. The on-call contract is open-ended, so in theory, we could have another assignment, but there's nothing active at this time. I did not work on either of the two projects, nor was the work performed out of the office that I sit in, which is Wilmington, Mass. Please be advised that I state for the record that I can act in a fair and objective manner, and the mere fact that GPI has worked with Bowler Engineering in the past will in no way impact my decision either in favor of all or against the permit. Should you have any questions, please don't hesitate to contact me.
Thank you. Okay, I think we got. All the, all the legalese out of there. So if uh, you would introduce yourself and uh, and uh, I know it's a big set of plan, maybe if you could just have the civil, the civil plan to show us.
Yeah, I've just got, um, I've got a board with the existing or the previously approved plans. Then I've got a board with the current plans.
Okay.
And I've just got a couple uh, clouds of what changed.
Okay, good.
If you don't mind.
Sure, yeah.
Chairs there.
Would you introduce yourself, please?
Uh, my name is Kevin Cisco, design engineer with Bowler Engineering, uh, located at sixty-five LaSalle Road in West Hartford, Connecticut. Yeah, I've got two easels, but these chairs might.
Sure, that's fine.
Might work. Thank you for the summary there. So, as mentioned, the two parcels, thirty eight and forty United Drive, were, plans were submitted by a different engineer under the same ownership and approved last June. Since then, Bowler's been on these plans, taking the approved set, and we've taken it to a construction level. And by doing so, we've made a few minor modifications to each site, which more or less are the same for both.
Seer, would you like to come up? Would you, would you like to come up where you could see him? See if we have somebody here. Yeah, that's better.
So, on the right here is thirty eight United, and on the left is forty United. both sitting on the south side of United Drive, with existing industrial development on the opposite side to the east. And then there's vacant woods and wetlands to the south and a condo complex down there to the southwest. Just to familiarize yourself. So I'm gonna kind of go site plan for each and then go from there. So on the left is the plan prepared by Level Design Group. Those were the approved plans from last year. So for thirty-eight United here, we've kept the same building footprint, generally the same layout, circulation. The major items we tweaked with the site plan, uh, as mentioned in the summary there, was we reduced the parking from a hundred and sixty-six spaces to a hundred and sixty-two spaces. So that, I think it's very much, that reduction in four spaces is clouded on the top of the page there. And those four spaces were removed in order to, uh, catch up to existing grade quicker. And then the other modification we made to the site plan. The approved plan from last year has roughly five retaining walls around the perimeter of the site. They have range in height from three to nine feet. Uh, what we've done is removed all the walls. And in place of that, we're doing a rip rap enforced slope that's at a ratio of, uh, one and a half feet horizontally to one foot vertically. So about sixty-six percent. So I've got that colored in red here. So more or less your entire, uh, east side and south side, which above the wetlands, are now that stone rip rap slope. And that's it for site plan modification. We've got the same driveway entrances, same trailer loading area, trailer spaces. And then I flip over to the drainage plan for each of them. So I've got the stormwater systems colored in red on the approved, the previously approved plan and blue on the Bowler plan.
Just before we move on, um, I had notes from the engineer saying that the car spaces were one thirty-four and one thirty.
Oh, sure, so the, yes, it's a hundred and sixty-two total when you add up the employee and then the trailer spaces.
The trailer spaces, okay.
Uh, it does not account for the loading spaces along the building.
Okay.
Well, yeah, yes.
Okay.
That's correct. So again, we maintain similar drainage patterns that was approved, maintain similar size and locations of the stormwater systems, and we maintain the same outfalls that were approved. The only difference with our plan is that we've swapped the underground perforated pipe system here with an underground ADS, uh, plastic chamber system, which is essentially instead of a pipe, it's more of a arch with an open bottom. And with that, you get a little bit more storage per linear foot as well as enhanced infiltration with the open bottom. And there's an isolator incorporated into that for sediment control entering the system. And then this basin down here, as you can see, got slightly bigger on the thirty-eight United plans. And that's a result of the forty United plans. But essentially, there's an existing detention basin there now. The approved plan was to modify it as such with a wall around the entrance. Uh, we shifted the entrance for forty United down and created one larger basin there without a retaining wall. I'll speak to that with the forty United plans. But essentially, that's the site and drainage, uh, modifications for thirty-eight United. And you want me to move to forty and just roll through that?
Sure.
Forty United Drive, which sits just west of thirty-eight United Drive. Very good, with these plan orientations just below. Uh, again, the approved plan had a hundred and eighty thousand square foot building footprint. We kept the footprint the same size, kept it in the same spot. And then, again, I've highlighted the site modifications that were incorporated to forty United. So again, for parking, we net increased the employee spaces by six. Uh, we removed two from the parking lot to the left. Uh, as you can see, there's two spots that were on the approved plan that are no longer over here. And then we reduced the size of the island down here to add some additional spaces to make up the net gain of six employee spaces. Uh, again, the parking area up here remained the same with trailer spaces and loading areas. And I've clouded the driveway entrances. They're more or less the same. We just orientated them to be perpendicular with United Drive just for ease of access with some truck turn movements. And then, as I mentioned, by doing so, this area enlarged a bit, uh, which I'll get through in the drainage piece. And again, there were some existing retaining walls that have been highlighted in yellow and pointed out on the previously approved plan.
They're ripped out now?
We've gone with a rip rap stone slope as well, with the same one and a half to one ratio. And that's again, more or less along the east side and the south side, which abuts wetlands here and this side drains to that. Existing detention basin that we're planning on modifying to handle the increased capacity. And then just to point out, there is this red line here. That is the, uh, wildlife corridor that exists on site. Um, so the previously approved plan also accounted for that with a turtle barrier fence. And we've kept that as well along the whole length of that parking area.
So you've changed the, instead of the fence being totally straight, you've kind of made a little zigzag in it?
Yes.
You've got to protect those trunks. Nobody's ever seen one there, but.
Yeah, so those are the site plans there. Again, increased parking on forty United by six spaces. Rotated entrances to line up with the road a little bit better. And we decided to go with stone slopes and little retaining walls. And here we go for the drainage plan. Again, I've kind of marked out where the stormwater systems are located on the previously approved plan over here and then the current plans that we have in front of you in blue there. So essentially, the basin down the bottom left, more or less the same. Same drainage pattern, same outfall. The basin in the top right there, that's the thirty-eight United one. It's just not highlighted on this plan. The underground system, again, we made the swap from the perforated pipe underground system to the ADS system just for maintenance, additional storage, and enhanced infiltration. The largest tweak, in my opinion, would be the driveway on the previously approved plan was further up on United Drive, which created two basins here that are pipe-connected. We've essentially shifted that driveway down a little bit. And by doing so, we were able to make one larger basin instead of two. But again, as we've accounted for all of the drainage calculations and it's been third-party reviewed, and we've maintained compliance with the Mass Guidelines. But we tried to maintain the approved plans, layout, size, limited disturbance, with just some slight modifications to parking some stone slopes and then resizing the basins a little bit to handle what we calculated.
So still the, the same amount, though? You've just relocated a new base on the top, right?
Correct.
Or is that the other lot?
Um, so the one top of the page there, that's the other lot.
Yeah.
Uh, I just don't have it, uh, highlighted on this plan here.
Yeah, okay.
But, um, yeah, the large basin there, that's the existing detention basin on site that we're proposing to enlarge, enlarge of it.
Yeah, I'm only seeing half, so, yep. I get you.
Yes. And then we've got the full set of plans there that have incorporated architectural plans. We do have a landscape plan in the set now. There is a lighting plan with dark sky compliant fixtures. Uh, and then the utility plan matches the architectural plan for utility connections, uh, downspout locations. It's very similar to what was approved, which is, as we work through the construction value engineering, that's the modifications we've arrived at.
Okay, how's that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, we've got, uh, something from our DPW, the, the director. He, he said that the, uh, uh, please refer to the mass paving section. Details shown on sheet C dash nine oh one. The details shown on plan set for forty differs from that shown on the plan set for one thirty-eight, uh, for number thirty-eight. Uh, so apparently, it, the details, one is different than the other. Uh, figure out which one it should, should be in and make them the same, I guess. Use the heavy-duty pavement sector, section for tractor-trailers is shown on plan set for thirty-eight, United Drive for both. Number two, existing, uh, United Drive pavement condition is very good in the vicinity of the proposed project. The road shall be milled and overlaid, uh, uh, one and a half inches six months after the substantial completion of the project. The limits shall be to the limit of the work as designated on the plans, east for thirty-eight and west for number forty. Any damage to the existing Cape Cod berm during construction shall be removed and reinstalled monolithically with the pavement top as designated on, uh, two above. So he had, he had some concerns. You're going to be doing work there. He's anticipating that you're going to be disturbing United Drive, so he, he wants it taken care of and addressed.
And he wants the paving for, to be the same of both?
Yeah.
To the, whatever the greater one is.
Yeah.
Sure.
And, uh, Mr. Brennan, our review engineer, um, he wrote, he wrote, he stated that the drainage met the standards. I'll bet I'm not going to go into the whole, whole thing. But in, apparently in May, our letter dated, this would be in Mr. Brennan, our letter, uh, May first, two thousand and twenty-four, letter to the planning board. We recommend conditions related to more discharge of liq- liquid hazardous material and our petroleum project and to the prohibited use of lists, uses listed under DBAL, section four point six, which is going to be already in our, in our, in our thing here. And he said the same for the, for the other, both thirty-eight and forty. Basically, it's a, except for the number, it's dead of both of them.
We, we had them, that was put in the original building, right? Original plans had the, the permit with as far as handling hazardous materials and stuff. So that's already been, you've changed none of that, right?
Correct.
Okay. And, um, one of these, I forget which one. One of these was never recorded. And so it's, I think it goes in and take, basically, those are the.
Yes, yes.
Those, those are the conditions, which are pretty much the ones that were in there before, but some, I, I think, well, I know the DPW is in here and, um. So I, I will, I'll quickly try to read the, read, read through them. But this, this is what the conditions will be, the, the pretty standard. Uh, this, uh, for thirty-eight, this decision shall supraterceed any previous prior planning board decision related to the subjects added herein. Number two, per the DPW directive, it shall be milled to the one point, uh, five inches and six months later, which I had already just read. Uh, and also number three will be, uh, any damage to the existing Cape Cod berm during construction shall be removed and reinstalled monolithically with the, uh, pavement top as is designated in condition above. Number four, the use set forth in, uh, zoning bylaw, section four point six point seven, prohibited use are allowed at the, no uses are allowed at the property. It's listed in there, which is, you know, which this, this is pretty much boilerplate. And all materials and products will have safety, uh, material safety sheets, MSDS documentation, compliance with the Conservation Commission regulations. No liquid chemicals or hazardous materials will be allowed on the property. No vehicle repair or maintenance allowed on the property. All products to be maintained in manufacturer's packaging. Number ten, inspection reports due January first annually through the Building and Commissioner and periodically, uh, throughout the year at the Building Commissioner's discretion. Operation, operation and maintenance plan and long-term pollution prevention plan to be maintained, recorded at the register seat and delivered to the Building Commissioner annually. Many amendments to the special permit are expanded usage shall require a new application submitted to be filed, presented, and approved by the planning board before being implemented. Number thirteen, written mitigation plan, employee training in case of accident discharge in the Water Resource District, but both inside, the, the warehouse and outside in the parking lot should be prepared and delivered to the building and sector prior to construction. Plans shall include where and what mitigation suppliers' products will be on hand in the case of an accident. This plan would include any tractor-trailers on site, uh, fuel and oil discharge. In addition, there will be small, a small shed outside with at least a min- bare minimum mitigation supply, speedy dry absorbents, absorbent pads, biohazard sorb- sorbents such as pillows and mats, disposal bags or bins, et cetera. Number fourteen, applicant shall install Bowler's ground gas meters, electric meters, ground utility equipment, or any other infrastructure related to items that are in danger of being struck by a vehicle. Fifteen, upon the owner, contractors request a pre-construction meeting with, uh, code officials involved in the project will be had, held to ensure everyone is on the same page and streamlines the process. Sixteen, a copy of the decision must be filed in Plymouth Register treat. An as-built plan shall be provided, uh, to the zoning board, it says here. I think you got to get some from the zoning board too, so I think that's why that's, that's in there. So those are the seventeen conditions that will be looking at. It's got to be a lot, a lot of special permit. Okay. Let's close the public hearing and, and we'll vote on it. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we move to public, close the public hearing.
Good time, Jake.